Hi.
Mr. Mannix, you're going to be sending us an invitation to executive session, correct?
I am going to try to do that again, yes. Actually, can we go to breakout room? Gary, would that be too dangerous to try to breakout room, you think, or not?
He's muted, I think.
I think if we plan to do that, it wouldn't be too dangerous, but I would like to test it first just to make sure.
They did it in a superintendent, it worked well, but I'd hate to have it backfire. It would not go over.
Right, right, especially without, yeah, without having tested it ahead of time. I know in theory it's supposed to be just as secure, but
Yeah.
Trust but verify.
Hello Nicole, I'm very jealous of the people that are outside having this meeting and I think we're short Crystal.
Where did Ed go?
He was here.
I lost him somewhere.
Yeah, we did.
Yep, he's not.
Look Kathy's up to you, we can wait a few minutes, we certainly have a quorum.
Oh, there's Crystal.
There she is.
I really don't know what happened to Ed, though.
He definitely was here.
I'm present.
Hold on, I'll send him a message. Okay, all right. Call to order. Mr. Mannix, would you be kind enough to say the pledge of allegiance for us?
Absolutely.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with ever two and justice for all.
Thank you. Joanne, may please have a roll call.
Douglas Bebe? Douglas Bebe?
Guys, please turn your microphones on.
I'm here.
Kathy Buckley?
Here.
Michael Hagedorn? Michael Hagedorn?
He's here.
Ed Marin?
He wrote here.
Ed Marin? Christopher Micho?
He's here.
Crystal Palmer?
Here.
Nicole Pupart?
Here.
Mark San?
Here.
Pauline Stone?
Here.
Kathy, you're on mute.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for attending the Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 Board of Education meeting for Beatman Town Central School District. May it be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
A motion, Nicole.
Nicole, and who is, who's the next one?
I'll second, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. So any questions or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May it be resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Open, Crystal.
That was motion, Pauline?
Yeah.
Second, Crystal, are you seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. Mr. Mannix will be sending us an invitation to attend executive session, so please leave this meeting and go into
Yeah, please close out.
All right, it looks like we have five back so far. All right. May it be resolved that the Board of Education return to regular session at 6:32? May I have a motion, please?
All motion, Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. Our next segment of our agenda is presentations. Our top number one is a recap of winter sports and preview of fall two. The presenter is the coordinator of athletics, Greg Myers.
So I know sports is very important, it's one of our goals, and as are extracurriculars. Greg is actually right now at a game, setting up varsity girls volleyball game. He is on call, sometimes the connection doesn't work down there. So we do, I have paged him, but we could move on, if it's all right with everybody, to the budget presentation while Greg transitions back into the board meeting. Sounds good? Okay. So the budget? Budget presentation, finally got some, some of the news we've been waiting for is in, and I'm going to go through that. I think Greg can be here in ten minutes, so that's fine. I'm going to go through that with Jen Parliament right now, so that you can ask questions and get a better understanding of where we are. And it does happen fast, because we really feel confident right now that we're really at the, really at the finish line. So I'm going to share a tab. Imagine you can see this now. So I can't see anybody, but can somebody give me audio?
We can see it, looks good.
Okay, great.
Beatman Town Central School District.
Yes, yeah, those are, those are some kids learning remotely and some kids in our environment this year. And I like our title this year, it's just rebounding successfully. It's very important, and I like the work we've done, both financially and more importantly, educationally. And that work is, starts with the board and finishes with our students, and in the middle you have admin teachers and staff, and it's been phenomenal this year, absolutely phenomenal. So our district drives us, or excuse me, our mission drives the district, and that is to make sure that our kids graduate from Beatman Town being quality contributors to society itself. That's something I take very seriously, and I know people hear that from me all the time. We are not exceeding the tax cap this year, our tax cap number is 2.68%, and we are right at that tax cap this year. We feel that's a number that the public will support, especially as we've done so much for the public over the last, since the pandemic has hit. A bit of a tax fact, tax fact for you is, as you take a look in the gray in the far right-hand bottom quarter, since 2013, I've, I've enjoyed presenting budgets that have a very balancing effect on our, number one, our tax rate, and number two, on our community. Prior to that, there was a big shifts up and down, 12%, 9%, zero, negative, 12%, 8%. And lately, we've been hovering anywhere from about a .6 to 3.5, being our high. And, and that's, that's, that's the good work of, of the board, our business officials, and I think it really builds trust and confidence in our community that we can manage our budgets well and, and manage the tax cap well. So a little bit of district comparison right here. Beatman Town, previously, the, the first line here, the free and reduced line, FRL line, years ago, six, seven, eight years ago, we were the only district in around 53%, and there was a big difference in the free and reduced lunch numbers than anybody else. And now you see that we've been really status quo, but maybe it's unfortunate that other districts are seeing more and more free and reduced lunch students in their, in their districts. Our enrollment does not include pre-K is the largest enrollment in the county, and we have the largest pre-K in the county. So combined, we are significantly, are a little bit larger than Peru, and significantly larger than everybody else. And our tax rates are over here, we had a, first time ever this year, we had two tax rates, one for the town of Plattsburgh, and one for everybody else. That's 1628, if you take a look back here. It's been a long time since somebody's paid 1628 in taxes around here. This year, they were able to do that first time since prior, you know, to 2005. Jen, can you just quickly review, not to put you on the spot, but what happened with the split tax rate that happened in a couple different school districts?
Well, the equalization rate was different for the town of Plattsburgh, because, and the county sets that rate. So they were at 90%, which means the county is saying that we were, the town of Plattsburgh residents were under appraised, so their, their homes were, were not at where they should have been. So they get, it's almost like a penalty, almost. So they put you to where they feel that you should be, which was 90%. So that's kind of how it works. We, we don't control that, the county lets us know what our equalization rates will be for each individual town.
Thanks, I see how Sable had the same deal, so it was probably like Lake Placid probably needed that equalization, which is very rare, you rarely see that. But that's where we are, you know, when looking at a district comparison. One of the keys to the budget is what is our fiscal outlook? Last year was terrible. We had, we had a terrible state aid run of $43,000 new money coming in, which you can't continue to pay health insurance and fuel and salaries and all that other stuff for, you know, 500 people and protect 2,000 kids. This year, it's a lot different. Our aid run is, is good, and New York State is, is addressing aid issues that we've long advocated for. Every, every chance I've gotten, I've taken with our senators and our assemblymen and told them that, you know, fund, fund all the districts fairly, and they're really truly starting to do that, which is a miracle. Grants are strong, we'll go over that in a minute, our grants are still strong here. On top of that, we'll receive some short-term stimulus aid, and we'll redo that in a second as well. So right now, our fiscal outlook is dramatically different than it was a year ago, and that is really good news. How's it going to impact you right now? We don't know how it's going to impact you right now, but we will know shortly. Jen, can you go through the process of how do we determine, to the best of our abilities, we won't know with certainty, but how do we determine the tax rate?
One of the things I am waiting for is the equalization rate to come out from the county. So I, hopefully that will be out soon. Then I also talked to the county about what they think assessments will be, because I have to estimate the assessments, and we'll do an estimate based on our levy and the assessments and the equalization rates. And hopefully that will be shortly, within the next couple of weeks usually.
And I know we have some science buffs here, it's not a science, but it's, it's our best, it's our best prediction based on solid evidence. So thanks, Jen. A little bit of 2020, 21 in review. As I mentioned before, we were decimated by terrible aid last year, and then on top of that, the governor was saying, we're going to reduce aid even more, we're in fiscal dire straits, and if Trump is elected, you know, all bets are off. We lost staff, we lost training, we lost materials, we lost equipment. To number one, number one, because of the bad aid run, then number two, to prepare for the promised aid cuts. Then the year started in, right in September, we lost almost a million dollars that was unexpected, even on top of that 20% from the governor withholding monies. And all that was really worrisome and stressful for sure. But we had had a plan in place to do the best we could and get through this particular year and, and be able to really start rebuilding regardless of what was happening, you know, at this point right now. However, together, and it was truly together, the reopening team and so many others, we were able to produce, I believe, and I think others believe, one of the best educational offerings in New York State. So even with that terrible, crippling aid run and the threats and the loss of money from all angles, we were able to have school for our kids five days a week, which is rarely, rarely seen in the state. This included many college class offerings, extracurriculars, and more learning opportunities at each school. So I applaud everybody for making that happen. All this during a global pandemic, all this during an economic crisis. And we really were able to take a bigger brunt of the burden and still produce at such a high level. I believe that, and I'm proud of that. Today, I stand here confident, or I guess I sit here confident in our resolve that we offer and can offer the outstanding educational program that our community is proud of and will continue to be proud of. Our budget priorities for 2020, 21, or 2022, excuse me, I'll fix that, is we want to continue rebuilding our outstanding educational system that's built on high expectation for our students. We do want to produce world-class learning opportunities that are sustainable and that include strong ELA reading programs, college credits, partnerships, credentials for kids, and pathways, so kids can see how Beatman Town can be a tool, so they can leave Beatman Town ready to be that quality contributor to, to themselves and society. And we are always, 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 number one, looking for continuous improvement, and number two, carefully reviewing all of our expenditures to ensure maximum return on both the professional and the programmatic expense. So we really need to have our people performing at a high level, and when we see that, we usually will keep, keep, keep the resources there or add resources in those directions. Some budget priorities for 21, 22 are reinstate our computer science courses, reinstate a music chorus teacher that was a voided position, add-back project lead the way in each school, provide AP certified training that would offer more college credit classes, provide youth summer camps for kids with the Beatman Town Youth Commission, that can actually pay for itself with our food program, hire an associate principal to create a new structure while maintaining pre-pandemic staffing levels, establish a summer bridge program, which is a, it is a fancy name, it's a euphemism for summer school, but that doesn't necessarily have to be for the students that are struggling, and can help keep kids on track, or even have kids perform at higher levels, achieve higher on the region's exams, which we've done before. We're going to continue with the free breakfast and lunch program for all of our kids, and we really want to put a focus, continue that focus on athletics and extracurricular opportunities that are based on participation levels. We have a rifle team, which might be on the agenda today. We've talked about an Alpine team, bringing back a fishing team, and increasing our modified sports opportunities, which we've been able to do during the pandemic, which has been amazing. Reinstituting AIS, an improved structure to AIS and RTI through both teaching assistants and teachers at the elementary levels. And we budgeted once again for the capital outlay. Jen, do you want to go over the cap outlay for us?
Yeah, so next year's cap outlay is going to include finishing up the Beatman Town Elementary's security doors and hardware. So we'll complete all the doors over there.
And we get $80,000 of that $100,000 back, so we get massive improvements for a little bit of local expenditure. And then Jen, I want you to handle the buses as well.
Yep, so we are getting three new buses this year. We're going to try and go on the rotation of four, and then three, and then four, and then three, and see how that goes. We're to the point where we don't have many diesel left, so these are all gas buses, which has been a huge savings. So we're well on the way there, and we get about 75.1% of those purchases back as well in transportation, so.
Those gas buses not only save work, but they also save the environment, and our kids don't have to breathe that diesel, diesel, those diesel fumes. And we're also bringing back driver's education as a credit-bearing course that benefits both our kids, our school, and our families. So those are just some of the things that we're bringing back, those are priority budget items for us. We're excited about it, excited about what we offer this year, and excited about what the future looks like for Beatman Town. You take a look at our grants, I know we talk about grants, and we talk about how well we do with grants, and it's because we keep trying, and we're never deterred. And, and it's okay to say no to us, but we knock on a lot of doors and swing at a lot of pitches, and we, we connect every now and then. And this year, we're looking at over $3.5 million in grant, grant monies. I know there's new UPK grant money out there, so Jen, we haven't talked about that, but it would be nice to double that, 433,000, maybe that'll be our goal, is try to, try to have that completely paid for by the government in the future. But our grants are robust, and they're rewarding, they reward our environment, and they allow us to do a lot of great things for kids, teachers, and everybody. So here's that new short-term federal aid, which is really complicated, and you'll hear a little bit about it, and it's going to be hard to understand, and I'll just give you a couple bullets right here. So New York State was given by the federal government an allocation of $3.85 billion, just for, an 8.2 billion for education. If you remember Cuomo saying he needed 15 billion, or the place was going to implode, they gave him 26 billion, and then, as miracles of all miracles, they found, they happened to find five more billion in the state coffers, so we're, we're now in pretty good, in pretty good shape. But these stimulus funds are going to be allocated in accordance with Title I. If you take a look, our Title I, our Title I allocation is, is right here, is, is a decent-sized allocation, and they multiply that number. So that's good news for us. And the, kind of, some of the details that are still coming out are LEAs, and that's code name for school districts. They're going to receive this money, and they must reserve 50% of the amount allocated for equal reimbursement over four school years. So you'll hear other people say it's over three school years, but right now, it's over four school years. If the federal government doesn't fund the, the allocation by March of 2022 for subsequent years, then you resort back to a three-year rather than four years. So you take that, so we're going to be, it's relatively easy math for us, we're just short of 4 million, over four years, that's another million a year, and then if they don't fund it again, you have a million that you break into two years. So then it's a million, five in years, two and three. And then the last piece doesn't matter to us, because we receive more than $500 per pupil. So that's the short-term federal aid, I can come back and answer questions there. But Jen Parliament and I finished up the multi-year forecast, and Jen, why don't you take away the top part of the revenues for us?
Okay, so our revenues for this coming year, we have about $1.2 million, we're predicting for shared services and other monies coming in. Pilots are 356, 595. Our state aid is, and this is where the big change is, from the last time we looked at this, is the state aid number. So it's at 20.7 million, and it was at 19. something, I can't remember off the top of my head, previously. So that, that's the big change in, in this, in this document. And then the tax levy is for the 2.68, the 22,449. And then we go down to the appropriated reserves, so 150,000, and the 1.6 from the fund balance, which have remained the same since we've been showing in the slide.
Thanks, Jen. So then we have the increase in programmings, I just kind of went through that with you, compared to last year, a few dollars in adversity enrollment increases. We are a little worried about some of the, some of the growth we're seeing in different areas, and we've got to be ready for that. We have put back a lot of the equipment, material, supplies, and professional development monies. Matter of fact, maybe all of it, or close to all of it, right, Jen?
Yeah, not quite all of it, but majority, yeah.
Vast majority of it, yep. There is an increase in fuel, oil, and diesel, that's, you all see that at DePom, so we're prepared for it. 50 might not be enough, if it keeps climbing like it's climbing, but we're budgeting 50. Good news, I think we've shared before, our health insurance increase is just over, it's an odd formula the way they have it this year, but it's, we're going to just call it 3%. BOSI's admin's there, which is a lower number than normal, and that's probably mostly because of health insurance. And CBTEC increases were, that, that's all based on enrollment, what happens with kids, and some of the rates. And then some of the other numbers, or the, the bus purchases, so that there's the bus purchases, because we, Jen, I want you to just go through the dynamics of last year and this year, and then also talk about the truck.
Yeah, so the, the bus purchase last year, we did as a ban, so we borrowed the money, because we were so concerned about our outlook on our budget. So we, we did a ban, so we only had one ban payment budgeted for, for the current year we're in. So this coming, coming year, we're going to actually pay cash again, which is what we are accustomed to doing. So that's why there's the increase, the large increase there, is because we're actually paying cash for those three buses that we're going to purchase. We also built into the budget under equipment for next year to buy a new Dodge pickup with plow. The 2004 that we have has pretty much rusted out from, there, there's not much left. They, they babied it to the point where, I, I know Jim Chauvin said he won't even touch it, because he's afraid it's just going to fall apart. So it's leaking oil, it's leaking antifreeze, so it's time to replace. So that is also included in these numbers.
And then debt service, you mentioned that.
Yeah, debt services is really, we, one of our large payments came off the books, so it's now evened out. So we're back at kind of status quo, where principal and interest are, the next one to fall off, I believe, is 23, 24. So that's when we're going to have to decide to do another capital project. So we are seamless in our figures.
Thank you, Jen. There's Henry doing a project, some other kids working on their Chromebooks, where do our money come from? Basically, it's a 50/50 split, although that, that blue section's been growing. It's been, it's been uniquely shared, sometimes local share's been above 50, but right now, it's 48, 46, and then 6% from others, as we've been able to grow revenues from grants and unique programming. Capital outlay, we already talked about that, so we'll just skip that slide. Bussing proposition, you did a nice job talking about that, there it is again. I'm sorry, we do have a capital reserve on the ballot, which is new, and so Jen, can you take that away?
Sure, so we are putting it up for Sure, so we are putting it up for, for vote to add an additional five hundred thousand dollars to our capital reserve. Um, right now, we currently have about five hundred and fifty nine thousand in, in our capital reserve, which, when it was created, was put there for the repairs, replacement of the bus garage. Um, and we'd like to use these additional monies to add bathrooms and a concession stand to the new athletic facility. Um, it would eliminate the use of the porta potties and, and that, that stuff. So, um, that's what we're proposing. Uh, and what, how this works is you, you have to vote to have the money put into a capital reserve. You also have to vote when you want to take the money out of the capital reserve. So, um, yeah.
And this, this money is, is voting to go in the capital reserve, but it's not aligned to what we just talked about. The Board of Education at the time will determine if there's a need exists to, again, mo, move to address the bus garage, move to just concession stands, maybe there's an issue with a roof down the road. So these are all, this is money that's in reserve for the Board of Education to say, let's bring X, Y or Z to the public to vote on.
Yep, that's how it works. So, so if you do decide to spend it on something, it does then have to be voted on to actually take those monies out to pay whomever we're gonna have do the work. So that's how it works.
And come back to that, so here, there we have it. Um, are there any questions at all about the way we've crafted the budget, what we've built back into the budget, um, what we've talked about today?
I would, uh,
I have a general question. Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I'd just, uh, support your guy, your efforts to increase the capital reserve for the, for the, um, bathrooms and concessions around the field. I've heard from a lot of people, I mean, as capital project was a big part of what I've been doing on the board and, and I think that seems like a little thing, but it would just be a really nice, um, cherry on top of the cake there to, to finish that off. Uh, like I said, I've heard from a lot of people about what about that? And I'm like, hmm, well, we're, you know, it's probably coming down the road in the future sometime, so that's great to hear.
Um, I, I love seeing all the programming that is in planning to, to bring back. And again, I hope the taxpayers will approve the budget to do so. Uh, can you just clarify for me one thing? I never remember, what, what is Title One? What does that mean?
Yeah, Title One is just a term for all these grants. Either it's Title One, Title Four, Title Two. We get like a couple thousand dollars for Title Three and they're just the federal, that's the thing they give federal grants. So whatever's coming from Washington, the I D A is a federal grant. So those are, those are our federal grants. Um, Title One is because, is for districts that have basically higher than average, um, poverty levels in the country. So if you're a really rich school, you're not gonna receive any Title One monies. If you're doing, if you have a high property wealth, and there's some of those in this area, you're not gonna receive any Title One money. Does that answer your question?
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, it does, thank you.
Are there other questions?
All right, um, seeing there are no other questions, um, do we want to check back in with Greg Myers? Or would we like to proceed to number three?
I think Greg might be on now. He's definitely on his way.
I am, I'm on.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, good evening, hope everybody's doing great. Um, just want to give you a quick little rundown of, uh, what, what's happened with winter season sports and what's going on with fall two. Uh, presently, we're hosting our first, uh, varsity and J V volleyball games in the high school gym and we are in our second modified game of the evening. So it's been a pretty busy evening, uh, in the high school. Uh, so I got a quick little like bullets of, of what, what's happened with, uh, with winter season. Um, I feel that the winter season was a, was a huge success. Um, and I want to thank the board for their support and, uh, um, you know, I, I truly do believe that our student athletes appreciated the season. I know the parents appreciated the season and they were, uh, very supportive of, of being given the opportunity to participate. So it was, uh, it was very successful. We had approximately a hundred and eighty students participate in, uh, bowling, basketball, ice hockey and cheerleading. Um, I want to thank the coaches again for all their hard work and especially, uh, with all the additional duties that are required, uh, for competing in athletics during this pandemic. Um, the parents were really supportive and flexible, um, and adhered to restrictions and regulations. Uh, you know, we were building the airplane as we fly a lot and, uh, they did a really nice job supporting us and allowing us to, uh, deliver a nice product for their kids. Um, we, we didn't have any major disruptions, COVID disruptions. Uh, we had a couple pauses during the season, but nothing that stopped the season from occurring. Um, and in my opinion, I think it did better, we did better delivering a season, uh, than we ever expected, um, to, to be able to do. Uh, fall season too, like I was saying, uh, is football, volleyball and cheerleading. Um, we began those practices two weeks ago. Um, we have a hundred and seventy one students right now currently participating in those, in those sports. Um, volleyball will be following the same guidelines that we have, uh, that we did for indoor sports in the winter, uh, where there won't be any athletes allowed, uh, in the facilities, but we do have the streaming services going on in the gym through N H F S. And, uh, we have parents streaming, uh, the games for the modified kids in the middle school gym. Football and cheer will also, will be following the same guidelines that we did for outdoor sports in the fall for soccer, where each allow, each spectator, each athlete will be allowed, uh, two spectators. Um, we're gonna confirm all that tomorrow at our A D meeting, but I feel that's gonna be the, the, the avenue that we're gonna go for, uh, for football and cheer. Um, var, varsity volleyball and J V volleyball are gonna play nine games and modified volleyball is gonna play six contests, so it's a quick season. It, it's only a, a, a five week season, but it gives them something. Uh, football will be playing, uh, varsity football will be playing one scrimmage, which is Friday night against Peru. And then, um, we have two games, uh, uh, being played after the, the following Fridays. Uh, if you want to watch those, you're, uh, you can check them out on N H F S. Those are also being streamed, uh, live on N H F S. Uh, J V and modified football will have two contests, uh, probably a scrimmage and a game for each of those. Uh, fall season two concludes on May first. Uh, it'll have a one week overlap with spring sports. Spring sports will start on April twenty sixth for those students, athletes that are not participating in football, volleyball or cheer. And, uh, uh, those kids will join the following Monday and they'll be able to transfer some practices in. So they, they shouldn't miss any contests if they're there every, every day, for every practice. Um, spring sports will be a full season, a, a complete league schedule and, uh, with the hope that there'll be some kind of culminating event at the end, similar to sectionals. Uh, that, that plan hasn't been drawn out yet, but that's something that we're working on. Um, they will play from, they, they start April twenty sixth, like I said, but we'll, uh, we'll finish somewhere around the week of June fourteenth when all the, the games will be going. Because of the cancellation of winter or of spring championships, it allowed us to extend that season much longer. So that's quick, those are some bullet points on what's going on, uh, in athletics right now. Um, I'm open to any questions or if you got any, if you want to know anything else. Um, that's about all I had.
I have a question.
Well, I'd like to thank you for all the work you put in on behalf of our students. They really need, there's, there's athletics. It's really great and thank you for the work you've put in.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Meyer, yeah, I'd like to thank you as well, being very involved with, uh, multiple sports. Um, really appreciate your efforts. Uh, but I had a question, um, I don't know how the coaches are gonna work, like, for examples, one example I see is that that week overlap, if you have coaches that are coaching fall two, how are they gonna start that first week? One example is like Mr. Fish, and you know, how's he gonna do baseball when he's doing football still?
Yeah, we may have to work some schedules around that. Uh, baseball will, will probably practice right after school and football is practicing, uh, well, he's doing modified this year. We haven't worked all those things out completely yet. There's a week overlap, like I know Craig Bacon's doing golf, he's gonna work out, practice for golf and he'll do, he'll probably pull double duty for those. But, uh, there isn't a one week overlap that we have. So we're gonna try to work that out with, uh, other coaches, helping them out, covering one way or the other.
Okay.
Greg, Greg, I pinch hit, I pinch hit for mod basketball, I can pinch hit for golf.
Well, there you go, perfect. Actually, I, I have Mr. Harsh is approved, uh, is gonna be approved as a volunteer assistant and he's a certified coach, so I'm sure he, I've always said I, that's the best gig that we got, is that golf gig. So I'd be a volunteer every year for that if I wasn't the A D. Any other questions? Perfect. So I'm gonna go back down, I got volleyball down in the big gym, so I'm gonna go watch our varsity volleyball play P H S, so.
Hey, Greg, Greg, I have one follow up question and I appreciate the work you did with modified, you're looking at those high school, all those high, all those middle school kids, how many more opportunities? Did the volleyball end up with two mod teams or?
Yes, yeah, we're running two, we actually are running two games. The second game is going on right now, so we had thirty two kids that are, are playing volleyball. We're running two teams and we're able to, to find coaches and it's, it's run, up and running. So got them on the schedule, ready to roll.
That's terrific, thanks, Greg.
Yep.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers.
Okay, thanks, enjoy the nice weather, it looks like it's beautiful outside.
We wouldn't know, we're inside right now.
Yeah, I haven't been outside since this morning either, so, all right, we'll see you now, thank you.
All right, bye bye. All right, it looks like the next segment is, um, topic number three, update on the, uh, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty one elections. Presenter is District Clerk, Julian Menard.
Presently, the two thousand twenty one election and budget vote is scheduled to, to go forward with voting occurring in person while also allowing voters to request an absentee ballot upon fear contracting COVID nineteen. Applications for absentee ballots may not be submitted more than thirty days prior to the election. So that would be April nineteenth. Voting will take place from eleven to eight on Tuesday, May eighteenth. The new location for in-person voting will be the Learning Theater. In-person voting will be conducted in a manner consistent with New York State Department of Health guidelines, intended to protect voters and school district personnel and may include the requirements that voters wear masks and maintain proper social distancing. The district has three seats available for three expired terms from seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty four. Those seats are presently held by Kathy Buckley, Ed Marin and Mark Sam. Nominating petitions. Education law has been amended to indicate petitions must be signed by the greater of twenty five voters or two percent of voters who voted in the two thousand nineteen annual election. This modification reduced the number of signatures required for many districts that saw greater voter turnout for the two thousand twenty annual meeting than they typically do. So for two thousand twenty, we had two thousand two hundred and thirty voters. In two thousand nineteen, we had six hundred and sixty five. Therefore, at least twenty five signatures are required for the nominating petitions, which are due to me by Monday, April nineteenth, by five P M. There is no limit on the number of nominating petitions a district resident may sign. Board member seats are at large. Nominees are eligible for every seat rather than a specific seats. That is an update on the elections.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Julian? All right, seeing that there are none, we're moving on to reports. This, um, first report is Superintendent of Schools, Daniel Mannix. Uh, he'll be discussing learning opportunities, grant presentation, coordination and responses.
I'll try to make this quick. Um, as some of you know, we did receive a wonderful, uh, grant, the E L T grant. We received late notice in the middle of December, pandemic was at its height. Um, it was rejected for a few reasons, um, at the local level here. And I went back and, uh, worked with Shelley Manchester, we rewrote it, we resubmitted it to the state. Um, the state was silent on it. We asked them how we stood, they said, oh, we lost it, but we just found it and it looks great, we'll fund it for you. So we received, we asked for a lot and we received a lot. Um, so we actually received one point eight million dollars for learning opportunities to use between now and over the summer, um, which is fantastic. It's gonna be hard to spend. Why did we do that? Obviously, the pandemic's been hard on our kids, hard on our families, hard, everybody's been having to stay inside, looking at a screen and we've taken away so much of the things that make school awesome and fun and engaging and, and those usually translate to better attitudes towards school and better achievement towards school. So we're looking to bring those back. Um, so the nice thing about this, uh, flex, this grant that's been modified is that it's flexible. Nobody's required to offer a learning opportunity and nobody's required to participate in a learning opportunity, but everybody's allowed to offer a learning opportunity, uh, teachers, aides, parents, vendors, substitutes, student teachers, uh, and we've received a number of, of wonderful opportunities already for, for students to participate in. And they can be for an hour, a week, an evening, um, a Saturday, uh, any, you know, you're only lacked by your creativity. So our immediate priority was that we need people, we need people to offer these opportunities. Uh, went well back to our full staff and, um, tried to announce this through different social media and the press um, agencies around the area and we've had a great response. People are knocking on our door to offer things for our kids. And it's a forty, written into the grant is forty dollars an hour, thirty dollars for uncertified and there's setup time and take down time. Some learning op, one of the best things about the, the grant, one of the things I couldn't get away from is one of the goals in the grant is to give every student fifteen high interest books. Fifteen high interest books, fifteen could be fifteen, could be different magazines. Um, if you're into hunting, you might want Field and Stream and, um, the book Hatchet, you, you're gonna get it. Um, that's the nice thing about this grant and they're yours to keep. Um, S A T prep, college night, running clubs, uh, paint and sip, they've done that at Cumberland Head, it's fantastic. And you walk away feeling like you're an artist and your love for art grows. I've seen it in my own house. I've seen those, uh, a number of times, those are awesome, field days. Uh, arts and crafts is a big one for the kids. We just finished, we're in the midst of finishing an in, an interest inventory and we're just looking at all kinds of unique, um, opportunities to help our kids grow. Uh, here's another whole list, gardening clubs, we've got that started, um, you name it, we can probably offer it if we can find the kids to participate. Um, baking club, we actually have a couple of high school teachers that had been baking with kids over the pandemic and now they're really excited because they have Hannaford cards that go, cards to go get the flour and eggs and whatever else they need to bake. And they're gonna use a home ec room instead of their own kitchen and it's, you're just gonna take it up a level, so pretty cool. The types of learning, as I mentioned, are based on what we had from the E L T grant with STEM. That's the STEM shield right here in the middle, home and careers, hiking, foreign language and, um, fine arts are major, and cultures over the top are major, um, major keys to the grant. And we have between now and July one to finalize any offering, but offerings can drip into the summer, which is really cool. And some more ideas, nighttime, uh, stories with, uh, Principal Bazio reading to all the little kids, because he's got little kids, uh, cooking on Sundays, photography, maple sugaring, all kinds of, um, different opportunities. You put it in writing, you send it to me, I'll give approval. It'll go then to the principals because they know more of the details for their building and, and some of the hiccups that, that they normally experience. Um, you know, with some pro, proposals. And then you sign up students and then you have a good time and teach some kids along the way, maybe put a book in their hands and then you finish with a little bit of cash in your pocket, it's a fair trade. Why is it a fair trade? It's a fair trade quite simply because we know that when kids participate in high quality extended learning opportunities led by trained and caring adults, and that's one thing we, we, we have a lot around here, is they improve their attitudes towards learning, they exhibit future behavior problems, they're far more likely to graduate from high school, they have better health and wellness and they stay engaged, so outside of the regular class time. All that is, has always been a bonus for us over the last six years and we wanted to keep it going. So that's what we're excited about. I don't know if there's any questions, but that's the E L O grant you might see or some people might still refer to it as the modified E L T grant. Thanks for your time.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, well, if there's programming either.
Well, if there's programming either before school or after school for this school year, will transportation be provided for students?
Yeah, that's the easy part, right? No, I'm just kidding. Yes, there'll be transportation provided. We will run a late, a late bus run. We will run, well Jen, you've worked a little bit with Jim on some of the tricks to this. So why don't you just share that?
Um, the before-school ones are, are a little trickier than the after-school, but we're working on there, there is a possibility at the Beattmentown Elementary. The children would ride on the bus with the middle school, high school kids. If there was room, we could do something by seven forty-five. To get the kids over to Cumberland Head, though, we have to wait, we can't get them there until eight, because obviously they're dropping the kids off here, and then they'd have to truck the kids over to Cumberland Head. So things can't start until eight at Cumberland Head in the morning. But then anything after school, really Jim has said, he's got drivers that are willing to drive. And it's much easier after school, between four fifteen and four thirty, or anything thereafter, and on weekends as well. He has people that are willing to drive. So as long as our buses aren't too full, that's what we're, we're, we have to pay attention to, because we can only have the, so many children on the bus, that transportation will, will work.
We've done before in the morning, Running Club and A I S before, and we feel with the safeguards, we've had no spreads on the bus, and we feel that it's been, it has been safe, especially now with the windows down. Is that good? Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? So, yep, exciting grant. I just wanna make sure that y'all knew about it. And that's what I have. Thank you.
All right. Jen, the next report would be the Business Manager. Do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Um, the only thing I wanted to just talk about real quickly was you're going to be approving the, this year's capital outlay bid. We, we awarded the bid to Nickerson. If you approve it tonight, we only had two bidders, but that will be for the bleachers and a few of the Beattmentown Elementary security doors and hardware. And once we approve it, I'll start as soon as tomorrow morning to get the, those bleachers ordered, because it is going to take a little bit of time to get them here. So just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that that is on the agenda, and we are moving forward with your blessing. And that's about it.
All right, excellent. Any additional questions for Jen Parliament?
Jen, by policy, we take the lower of the two bids. Is that how it works or?
Correct. Yep.
All right. All right. Our next category is committee reports. Our first committee report is through Audit Committee. Our second committee report is the reopening committee. Just out of curiosity, who's going to be speaking for the reopening committee? Can I see a hand?
I'll nominate Crystal.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do it.
I can do it, but I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know what happened.
I forgot. You're always such a good contributor. You weren't there. Some of, we'll put it together for you. I, I know some of the items, and I'm sure some other people can add. A number of people, admin and board members were there, so.
All right, all right, we'll do Audit Committee quick, and we'll allow whoever's gonna speak up for the reopening committee to collect their thoughts. The Audit Committee reviewed and discussed the February twenty twenty-one financial reports as, as submitted by Treasurer Stahl. We gave, she gave a brief overview of the financial reports and gave an update on our food service program. Discussion was had on the benefits of current legal contract due to the losing, losing cap region service program. Well, that, that's. All right, we're gonna move on from that. Discussion of benefits of the current legal contract due to the cap region B O C's C O S R benefits of participating in the grant management B O C's C O S R, which we discussed earlier today. That's Shelley Mancini, or shoot, I got her name wrong.
Manchester.
Manchester.
Manchester. Thank you. Receipt and recording of the CARES Act grants and reinstatement of the twenty percent holdback of state aid and how it affects the current school year. Questions were asked on various aspects of the financial reports throughout the financial overview, including the impact of the no snack program and now on athletics, especially now they're being reinstated, and COVID safety protocols affecting budget vote. That was the summary of our meeting. We will be meeting again on April twenty-first at seven fifty A M. All right. Reopening committee. Your turn.
So I know there was a lot on that. Go ahead. I can try to help out. I just ran and got my notes from that meeting, that meeting and not prepared at all, but I have some notes in front of me anyway, and Dan, maybe you can help sort this out. So we met on March twenty-fourth, right Dan? Sound right? So I have some things highlighted. We talked about field trips. One of the things about the field trips is that we're gonna try to approve them, no eating on the bus. You know, I guess it was mentioned that if we can travel for some sporting events, we should try to allow educational field trips as well, which seemed to make sense to the committee. Spacing on buses, of course, is gonna be a priority. We talked about with the upcoming, now past, spring break, about the changes from the state regarding domestic travel. No quarantining or testing for the kids who are asymptomatic. However, there is quarantining and testing for international travel. If any of you have traveled, I'm sure you're up to date on, on those requirements as well. There is a New York State Travel Health Form, which I just had to fill out myself, because my family traveled to Florida, and I, I get the impression from filling that form out that it's really just for the state to do contact tracing if ever there were a case. Regarding visitors in the school, we're gonna try to allow educational speakers and people to come in to present to our students. I have your vendors already set up. I'm not sure what that means, Dan. Do you remember? Then something about the vendors?
Like, yeah, so we, in our reopening plan, we were pretty strict on no visitors, but some, some vendors, like maybe the food vendors, guys that come in and deliver food or desks, if we need paper, that's one of our vendors, they are allowed on campus and they go through a back door and they sign in, and we have to, we have to track all, all visitors pretty carefully, but we were really preventing them. And I guess what we really were talking about, Mike, and you, you nailed it, is we were reviewing our original positions and what the science has told us now, and could we loosen up some of our, our, our original plans to offer a better educational environment? So, you know, allowing just a couple vendors to come in and deliver food. Now you might be able to allow somebody to come in to play the guitar and, and have a concert or something, utilizing all the precautions we, that are, you know, best practices for sure.
Yeah, exactly. All these bullet points that I'm, that I'm talking about are, you know, changes to our current policy, kinda trying to get to some resemblance of what we had prior. You know, what we as a group, as the committee thought would be reasonable. Regarding the speakers in the school, we said that the individual principals will have the ability to make allowances for those visitors. And as a group, I guess we determined that the principals were probably in the best position to make those decisions. Facility use, which has obviously been very restricted. Again, we're gonna, you know, look at that. Of course, it would be, have to be a majority of B C S D kids. We would need a B C S D representative to present, you know, a facility use idea or form. Regarding sports, Mr. Mr. Myers kinda touched on football cheer and volleyball, but we were talking about the fitness room and how we are going to allow for some usage there. For example, the football team traditionally would, you know, spend an after-practice session there and, and we wouldn't have it traditionally where, you know, half the team is there, that would be unsafe. So Mr. Lozier was gonna look into, you know, having maybe just the offensive line today and tomorrow the defensive line and, and et cetera, et cetera, and how, you know, they were gonna try to work that out. So we were gonna try to allow more use of the fitness room. Also talked about football with doing more chalk talk or planning outdoors. And, and how, and I've seen this already, I'm helping Coach Modified. We're, we're using the locker rooms and letting the kids go in shifts. So that's something I've seen already. Not all the kids can right after practice bolt right into the locker rooms, and they're only dropping off shoulder pads and helmets. They're bringing home everything else, so it's just a quick drop off. And at the end of school, they can go in there, grab their stuff, change, you know, their, their, their shorts into their football pants, so they're not changing in the hallway, but we're trying to limit or control the use of the locker rooms. Vaccination, I guess it was reported that seventy-five percent of the, the staff is vaccinated. Does that sound right, Mr. Mannix?
Yeah, Nick Pepe's actually collecting volunteering data, so there may be more, but they don't have to tell us. It's all voluntary data. We'll know with pretty good precision in the, in the day or two, but that, that looked right before.
Of course, there's confidentiality issues, so that was all voluntary information. Regarding the prom, seniors, just a minute here, a second. Okay. Good news about the prom, there was a survey done, and they picked a venue, which is the Rainbow Room, of course, COVID, following COVID protocols as far as spacing, and they needed to get a good idea of how many students were gonna be involved. The, the cost, Mr. Bazio was suggesting was gonna be between fifty and seventy dollars per person, which does seem kinda pricey, but they're gonna work on finding some aid for students that might need it to attend if they wanted to. All, also interestingly, they needed to be tested on the morning of the prom. So all the kids would gather wherever a testing site would be determined. They get tested. It would be a rapid test. They're, they're negative. They get to go to the prom. If they're positive, obviously, they'd have to sit out. I was told that the capacity for the prom was a hundred and fifty, and I don't know what the, what the interest is at this point. The next bullet point was close contacts. As you guys have probably have seen from, that was passed to us from Mr. Mannix about elementary schools will be allowed three feet or less spacing, which we just touched on. But I was personally very glad to receive Mr. Mannix's email about the precautionary quarantine and getting clarification on how the Clinton County Health Department is quarantining, because I know a number of board members, including myself, had contacted them when my son was quarantined and tried to get answers. And I wasn't very impressed with the answers that I received. It, it seemed a little arbitrary and not exactly following the science. And I was basically told that this is just the way it is. And so Mr. Mannix directed an email to the, the Health Department and got some answers. I don't know, Dan, if it's a good time to, to respond. Oh no, well then you did send us a response, which was something we received, what, just the other day?
No, that was, you're, you're spot on, and the Health Department, because of probably so many members of every community saying, what are we doing here? They, they made an adjustment, and it was, it was odd. They made the adjustment to kinda go to six feet, just as CDC said you can go to three feet, but it's an improvement. And we now know that our far less kids will be impacted needlessly, and their education impacted needlessly in the future. So that's, that's been really good, and hopefully they can continue to improve like we're trying to do.
We also talked about siblings if a child, if child not cleared in forty-eight hours who has been symptomatic, then the siblings would also be quarantined. So I guess if, if a child is held on quarantine and is completely asymptomatic, then they, then the siblings would not be quarantined, but if he, if he or she does become symptomatic, then the siblings are also without, regardless of testing. New Visions program through C V Tech, they're gonna try to open that on a case-by-case basis for those, especially for those that, I don't know how this is gonna be determined, but how, for those that seem to definitely benefit from the hands-on rather than virtual, hands-on New Visions program. Eagle mart and vending machines, we kinda touched on, but I remember Mr. Bazio talking about having them just by the, the high school gym and, and have students allowed to use them during lunch periods or study halls. Not the ones near the Eagle mart, and it would be regulated by the teachers on staff there. So there's not a crowd around the, the vending machines, and there's gonna be some kind of hand washing station right near there, so they're touching buttons and then they're gonna use sanitizer. That's, I think that's all the bullet points that I have from our meeting.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive note-taking, Mike. You've kept that, kept that a secret for a while now. Good job. The two pieces I wanted to just go back to, one was the travel, we did take away a parent square question, because we didn't need it anymore about travel. And then the other one was the facilities, and you, you're spot on. The facilities use, we would like to open it up to groups that are fifty percent or more Beattmentown students and, not or, but and have a Beattmentown coach, teacher, admin, you know, even a board member as their lead, because they know how serious we take this and how important, you know, the masks are and, and just our rules and regulations. So the committee felt fine recommending that we open up the facility use if we follow those guideline, follow the COVID guidelines and the guidelines I just spoke of. So that's, that's now with your, without anybody's apprehension or objection, we would start that tomorrow. And, and Mike, I had, I think you had everything else. I don't know if anybody else had anything.
Crystal, you missed a good meeting.
Yep, I was, I was working. Unfortunately, I missed that one. I think I was sadly charting, not even seeing patients. I would have, it sounds like an engaging discussion. Wish I'd been there.
So you, you, it was, it was a long but engaging discussion. We did, you, you had a topic there on C V Tech kids and the New Vision kids, and Matt is definitely working on, on that. We actually talked more today about bringing kids back and opening up a couple other areas of the school and shifting things, so it's, it's working. Thanks. So thanks, Mike.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mike, for your accuracy and detail. It was excellent. All right, moving down to number five on our consent agenda. May be resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Crystal, a motion, no. Crystal, a second.
That was Crystal? That was Crystal? Thank you, Crystal.
Sure.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Any noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve this C S E, C P S E and five oh four recommendations dated four thirteen twenty-one. May I have a motion, please?
A motion, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. May I have a second?
I'll second, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, retirements, recall, preferred eligibility list and termination be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Pauline.
Thank you, Pauline. May I have a second?
I'll second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a question. If anybody is recalled and they choose, if there's a reason they choose not to take their position back, would we then need to post that position? Or maybe that's not even possible.
No, great question. So not necessarily, because sometimes the recall list has more than one person on, you just move down the list. And once you're, if you say no, you're on the list, and you say, no, I don't want to come back, you still remain on the list, and you have that right of refusal for seven years. And if everybody said, no, I found another job, I want to remain on the list, then you you could go post it. But it is, they have a legal right to it.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Excellent. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Noes?
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. All right, our next resolution is on page eleven of sixteen. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education of the following resolutions on this consent agenda. Side letter of understanding be today's summer. I'm sorry?
I think I had moved the list, and if he didn't, I do.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
There was a motion.
Oh, move the list is motion, I forget that every time, thank you, Ed. Mark, is there any, or would you consider seconding the motion?
I would definitely consider that, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mark. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing that there's none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. May be resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, transfers, acceptance of E L T grant, bid award and capital reserve be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mike.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mike. May I have a second?
Second by Chris.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions or discussion? All right. Seeing that there's none, Joanne, may please have a roll call vote.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Christopher Micho?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Mark Zan?
Yes.
Pauline Stone?
Yes.
All right, thank you, resolution passes. All right, additional items to discuss?
Can I move through those, Kathy?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Cap Ale, we've hit, so we can just take that off. Board meeting four twenty-two twenty-one. At that board meeting, we approved the B O Cs, it should probably be a night meeting, it could be relatively quick. We approved the B O Cs, we vote on the B O Cs budget, we adopt our budget, which you won't have any changes, we'll give you a little more detail, but it won't have any changes than what you saw tonight. You'll adopt our property tax report card, which again is based on all the information you saw tonight, nothing changing. And oh, and we would approve those people who had put in for their board seat petitions. So that's all on four twenty-two twenty-one. Probably gotta talk about like a five thirty. Five thirty start, no, I don't think there'll be executive session, and and that will be the there might be one stray agenda item, but we'll try to keep it clean and keep it just to those pieces.
Okay, so you're saying a five thirty start?
Well, if it works, if it works for people. And then the other question too is, and and we can start it in May, but do we want to start going in person? Are people comfortable with that? I am, but I've been double dosed, so I don't want to be selfish. This has worked great too, it really has, it limits public participation, but it's not like we always had a lot. So so we could do does anybody, does everybody think we should show hands at five five thirty on four twenty-two? Think you potentially be there?
That's fine.
That looks like the
All right, Mark, so Mark, you can make it.
Yeah.
Okay, Christopher? Can you attend on April twenty-second at five thirty?
I believe I can, let me just double check. Yes.
All right, excellent, excellent, Michael?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, Ed?
That was a thumbs up.
Oh, I I all I have is a red dot for Ed. Pauline, can you attend on April twenty-second at five thirty?
Yes.
Crystal?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. Nicole?
Yes.
All right, did I miss anyone? Doug Beebe?
I can be on.
Okay, excellent. It looks like we can all make it.
Great, I had facility use on here because of what we just talked about in reopening. And then I wanted to know how the board felt if we could have say in a month or so, if the numbers keep trending in a positive direction, knowing what we know from all the basketball games that we had in both gyms, if if the board would be in favor of us hosting a being able to host a basketball tournament in which we would allow to a two-person spectator. We would have a varsity J V, maybe seventh and eighth grade or fifth and sixth grade. We have a few different small brackets, not a big event. Players would come in and out, there wouldn't be like normal events where all the players could stick around and watch. But it would allow kids to play a little bit more basketball. And what I really, I was able to see kids play basketball because of my position, but it would allow parents to be able to see their kids play basketball. And I I think I would, I would run the tournament, I would do the work for the for the opportunity for the kids and the parents this time. So I I wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Great idea, I love it.
Yeah, I think it's important to get our kids back in school. Even for the fun stuff.
So we might do like a boys, because you can't do too much because of, you know, you gotta keep things smooth. Maybe it would be boys one week, and we could work on doing it girls too, so. Thanks, I'm hearing yes, if somebody has no, I don't, I definitely listen and I don't mind. You know, I don't mind pulling the plug on it at all. If the numbers get bad or anything like that, we wouldn't be stupid. The last piece before we hand over for another just a different discussion is the R F P strategic planning. So there's a, we had a great response to the strategic planning, we had five five or six vendors say they want to come in and help us develop a strategic plan, which is a big endeavor, that's what I wanted to just talk to you about. I just want to make sure that this is something the board wants to do. It's not something that's been done at Beattman Town before, it's been done sporadically across the state. Couple districts in our area have done it. They like their strategic planners, so it worked well for them. And what you what you receive out of this process and its work, and then everybody needs to be on the same page. You receive a lot of information that's gathered and then synthesized, and then the board is informed on community wishes. You know, do the board's goals parallel the community's goals? Ed, you could talk a little bit, you have been part of a strategic plan. What was the final outcome that you saw for the for the board, the school?
So one of the biggest values, I think, that we noticed was that a lot of the information surveys goes to the community, but also the staff, right? And and it gets it gets a perspective of what information is needed, what's what is accurately being informed. It also allows everybody to participate in the future and the growth of the institution as a whole, which is, I think, a tremendous value, because everybody becomes invested into into the growth. So what we have seen is some changes and improvement into our goals and our objectives, and also some great feedback from staff and community and students and modifying or improving our goals so that it meets all those objectives correctly. And so we've been doing it for several years, and every year you measure your performance and your growth. And so you make yourself accountable as to what what you're doing, how well you're doing, and what it is you're doing to get there.
Thanks, Ed, that nails it as well. So this, so but there's work involved, and it's 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 gonna take some time. It's gonna take people's time, and it's gonna take time to complete. You know, I just want to make sure we're all on board before, you know, we spend the time and money to do this. Does it sound still to everybody like a worthy, a worthy endeavor? Because because you could have the the opposite view, not the opposite view, but a countering view would be, you know, we're doing pretty well. We can, we we can keep going in the direction we're going and look to do this another year. I'm excited about the five vendors, I think we have some quality vendors there, I think they'll do a quality product. But I know, Ed, am I right, is it is it time intensive, is it is is it work, is there commitment involved here?
There is some time in it, but it's kind of blended in with, you know, professional development kind of thing as well. But I think you'd be surprised at how many people are willing to participate because they want to make the place better. And there's always the element of, you know, what is it that you don't know that you don't know? And we're fortunate right now that we have a really good team between administration and the board currently over the last few years that has allowed us to get better. But, you know, it's not always been that way. And and having a a a place for everybody to be able to to have goals established and grow, it's always good to have, it's always good to have, just like a business, you have a business plan, right? And it's difficult to just stay within our circle circle and assume that we know best always.
Well said. Not hearing any dissent, I guess we'll move forward if if you have apprehension or anything, I think the proper people would be Kathy as president. Ed, you're gonna serve on the selection committee. And Crystal, I think you're, if you're free, you're gonna serve on that committee as well. We could take one more board member if if somebody had the time for the interviews. But that, you know, talk to those, one of those three, and we'll we'll move forward. So I'm excited about it, I think we will win for those benefits that Ed described. And then unused emergency days was a wanted topic for discussion. And we we did talk about that at reopening, I think, we did talk about wanting, or we talked about the last board meeting and maybe reopening of wanting to make sure that utilizing a day or two to make sure that we limited the possibility of kids being on quarantine and missing their vacation. We're fortunate that happened to one employee and only one student while we were gone. And it wasn't, we've been, and a lot of times, one employee, one student equals a hundred kids, and it didn't end up that way. I don't know if that's because we took a day off before, but again, we're just lucky. So, well, that's, Crystal, I know you, that was a topic for you, so take it away.
Yep, so yeah, I I brought it up, I, yeah, I guess I just wanted to ask what the, obviously, the policy is, you don't know when there's going to be an emergency, right? That's hence the name. I was more interested in like how we use the the leftover days. I know traditionally with the calendar, there's a schedule. I guess I just didn't think that Good Friday closure was really an emergency, so I was just wondering how that fit into the policy. There was some discussion in the community that it felt like it was rather last minute. And certainly, other people loved it, right, to have an extra day on vacation. But yeah, so I guess my questions were, how did it fit into the policy? And this year also, I think, we originally had Good Friday off, and then it got changed because the calendar changed because of Covid. So again, just looking for the community for transparency. Nothing has been able to be planned this year, everything is last minute, of course, with Covid closures, totally get that. But again, just trying to make sure that moving forward, we are, you know, as as transparent as possible on when there will be used emergency, used extra emergency days.
Yeah, so there is no policy, they're basically, they are on my back. I make those decisions, I deal with the second guessing that goes along with whether it's six inches or four inches or whether it was, you know, twenty-two inches in Bear Town or in in no inches on Ruger Street, and and I deal with them. I actually drive the roads most times. But these leftover days are also not not as easy as you'd think. We don't, we, so we never do discuss Good Friday, we we don't. So, but it did land on Good Friday, you're right, but it wasn't for religious reasons. There, the reason why we took the day off Good Fr- Good Friday before was we were trying to elongate the start of the day to see if starting school with kids was gonna be safe. We were hoping other districts in the state would start, and we'd be able to watch and observe and see if there was major pitfalls. So remember, we started pretty late, and we put a couple P D days in, and we could have put a couple of of the vacation days in, and that's why, that's where that started. And then we didn't have a very snowy winter, so we had some days left over. One day was a state of emergency too, and those don't count. So, but we still have that day. So going into the break, I had two or three days, depending on how you look at things, to to call. And one of the things, or there's two main issues that you don't see, and you definitely won't generally know about, but we did talk about one of the two. And one of the issues was the idea that we've been hammered over Christmas break with Covid and hammered over February break with Covid, and wanting people to, everybody, not just people traveling. And I, but the board meeting before that, I brought up traveling. But everybody gets a break, there's no doubt about it. You get a break whether, no matter where you live, no matter the size of your house, you get a vacation. And you can either be in your room because you're under some massive quarantine that we already talked about, or you can be able to walk down the street, go to the park, go fishing and champagne, or go travel somewhere. And that was a real serious discussion I had with you guys, I had with reopening committee, and it was an inter it was a tough decision, and whether we, whether I was gonna try to close down school and just go remote for the week before, or let parents make that decision, or take a couple days off, or Or, um, you know, whatever we were going to try to do. And I was very fortunate as we tracked the days, cases didn't hit. And we took that, I decided to take that last day, put that last day back in place. Because I didn't want Murphy's law to, to give us a kid COVID positive on that, on that Friday, or even found out on that Sunday or whatever, they're positive in school on that Friday. And then a hundred kids can't travel. You know, all that other stuff. So it may seem last minute. Um, it wasn't last minute for me. It was a, uh, it was a tough decision. On top of that, which also this one you don't see and it's not part of the discussion and, um, not going to put the admin on the spot in public session right now, but there's a lot of people who go away on that Friday before every break. And you know, there's times when you, we lose educational value. Undoubtedly we use, lose educational value because they take personal days. Or two for one personal days. That's in the contract. So I can talk about that later if you need me to. But if you have so many people go during a regular year, you've got to move kids to study hall, right? Um, if you can't find the subs. This year we had so many go and we can't move kids to study hall. So were we going to have to have kids being bussed in on Friday, not have enough adults show up and send kids back home? So that would have definitely seemed last minute to me. That would have been really traumatic, um, on parents who are sending their kids on the bus and then having to turn around, turn around from work. So the other thing I didn't want to do was announce it on Tuesday or two Tuesdays before that, and then have the same impact that I just described now happen on Thursday. Oh, we got Friday off. I'm changing my tickets to Thursday now. So now on Thursday, we can't run school because in the day off. So everybody just went blank on my screen. I hope I didn't, did I lose you guys?
Over here.
All right. All right. Good. So I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are very real part of my, real, real part of my decision-making process was if I do this too soon, the people who are taking Friday off, you give them enough time to plan, they're going to, they may take that Thursday off. And that would do the same thing that, that vacation does on that Friday. So our admin were coming to me two weeks before then saying, I got eight people out already on Friday. I got six people out already on Friday. I never got to the point where I was asking them, hey, can you run school on Friday or not? Be, because number one, I knew that I was probably giving them Friday out. Going on Thursday, I was hoping we were going to get dumped because I was going to use the other day on Thursday, but we didn't, we didn't get enough snow. Maybe, maybe in Bear Town you guys did, but not, not, not the rest.
We did. You didn't drive up here.
Sorry about that. So, so that's, that's the decision-making process. They're, they shouldn't change on the, the last day and, and you know, the last day in May, the last emergency day, which is attributed in May. Um, should not change, but like you said, Crystal, you know, COVID could change something, but I'm, I'm not anticipating it being used anyplace else. And we probably should send something out to the parents, Joanne, to tell everybody that we have this one day left and there's a half day at the end of the school year that might not be on that calendar.
Okay. Thanks for the discussion. I just wanted to put it out there that it was a, it was a concern in the community. So appreciate your answer.
It's a tough decision. That's all we have on the list.
All right. Uh, we do not have an additional executive session, correct?
Correct.
All right. May be resolved that the board of education adjourned the meeting at seven fifty-nine. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
That was Mark?
Yep.
I'll second, Mike.
Mike?
Did you do Kirk Protema? I didn't hear that.
We don't, we, uh, we're not going to have a second executive session. So, um, Joanne's going to be here to the end of the meeting. So we don't need you. All right. Um, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any knows? Abstains? Resolution passes. Everyone have a lovely evening. Thank you.
Dan, before you hang up.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, uh, you had told me that, um, Mr. Fish was the JV coach and Pete Williams was the modified coach, but I see on the agenda was the opposite.
Yeah, I think they got switched.
Oh, they got switched?
I think that was news to me. The, uh, unless I read it wrong, but, but the way it was phrased to me was Pete informed people that he became the JV coach. I didn't ask anybody why. They're both competent. But I don't know why.
Okay. No, I was just curious. Cause I, I'm involved in, uh, my son playing. I was just wondering.
So what's he going to play? JVs or, or mods?
Well, that was an interesting discussion I've had with some of the other dads, not as a board member, as a dad. Um, my son as an eighth grader is right on the border. I think, uh,